All right, then, again, good evening. And welcome to the Tuesday, September 3, 2013, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Schoenhaider.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pendelion is absent. Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people of which it stands. One nation, united in all. And with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. The first item on the agenda tonight is comments by Mayor, and I have a few. I have a couple of resolutions I'd like to read. First one is a resolution honoring Robert Gepner. Whereas Robert Gepner has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since 1996, and whereas Robert Gepner did honorably retire from the City of Lake Forest on August 12, 2013, whereas Robert Gepner served in the following positions during his dedicated career: patrol officer, field training officer, and police sketch artist. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby express its appreciation and gratitude to Robert Gepner for a public service faithfully performed. And be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Robert Gepner this third day of September 2013. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And unanimously approved. Next will be a motion, or rather, a resolution to honor Michael Evert. Whereas Michael T. Evert has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since August 11, 1987, and whereas Michael T. Evert did honorably retire from the city on August 27, 2013, and whereas during his career as a firefighter, paramedic, Michael T. Evert accomplished the following: was awarded several honorable mentions from Lake Forest residents, and received several certifications from the Office of State Fire Marshal. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Michael T. Evert for a public service faithfully performed. And be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Michael T. Evert on this third day of September. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. I also have some other comments about an individual that we all know, and for any of us who have served on the council, on a board, or a commission, we've had the pleasure of seeing a gentleman come to our house every Friday. And Larry Crohn is here tonight. Larry, would you come up for just a moment? And we recognize you. Larry has been a fixture for those of us who have been a volunteer here in the community for a very long time. He's served our community for 13 years. He has faithfully, and I mean faithfully, delivered information packets to us, those of us who are on the council, those of us who have been on a board. Faithfully, every Friday afternoon, my daughter has started to look for you, and she'll be really disappointed that you're not coming. She'll always ask, "When's Larry coming?" Since February of 2000, he's delivered these private packages. We've been fortunate enough to benefit Larry from a lifelong residency in Lake Forest, and certainly your extensive knowledge of the city streets, no matter how dark or how curvy they may be, or how loaded with barking dogs. I know you've had to cater to many resident, and I'm really tremendously knowledgeable in the streets, on the community, on those mysterious change of addresses. Sometimes Aldermen don't like to let you know where they live. But for that, and your constant sense of humor, we thank you deeply for what you've done. I want to thank you as well for your continued service through the American Legion Post 254. And I wish you, and I know the council wishes you all the best, and we'll look forward to seeing you each year at Lake Forest Day and around the community for a very long time. Larry, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I have two other quick items. An announcement that I'm sure no one knows about: the BMW tournament's coming next week, beginning September 9 through the 15. The latest numbers that I've heard are potentially 130,000 people will attend this event in a seven-day stretch. So we are going to be truly the focus of not only the golf world, but the sporting world, and quite candidly, around the world. Lake Forest will be on display. So it will be an exciting week for us. I know most of us here will, in some way or another, participate or be there and share in it. I would encourage you to continue to do everything you do to promote our community. There'll be a lot of people here who are not from Lake Forest, asking for directions, looking for some help, some ideas, where to eat, where to shop. Make sure you point them in the right direction. And I think it's going to be a terrific week, so everyone's very excited about it. I also have one other comment. As many of you know, this year, as we kind of restart the council sessions, will be the final year for two of our senior Aldermen, Alderman Novit and Alderman Palmer, who, under caucus regulations, will be terming out. They've served their maximum amount. They've done tremendous, given tremendous efforts and tremendous things, contributions to not only the council but the city, and there'll be time to roast them and congratulate them. But what I did want to mention tonight was that the caucus is beginning to, the process of looking to replace the two Aldermen that will be retiring. I would encourage you, if you have some interest in that, or if you have some interest in serving on any of the city boards and commissions, please go to the caucus website, sign up, fill out a volunteer profile form. The caucus is now eagerly looking to fill a lot of roles that they're going to have for the coming year, and I would really encourage you, now's a great time to raise your hand and get involved, so I hope you do that. And those are my comments for tonight. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. To follow up on your last conversation, I wondered, actually, the person that Bob Palmer replaced, Debbie Hadad, is sitting in the audience here. Maybe she's here to throw her name in the hat again, so, not to put you on the spot, Debbie. Also, we were going to have Larry tell some funny stories about some of the strangest things that occurred to him when he was delivering, but he said, "You'll have to wait for the book that's coming out later this year." And just to follow up with the discussion on the BMW, you should have an information packet in front of you that Susan Banks has put together. That's also being used by our staff, because we will have staff manning the switchboards on Saturday and Sunday as well, in case people call. And I'd remind residents that you can, if you're interested, park in either the downtown train station lots or the west station lots, and take the shuttle to the BMW if you don't want to drive to the Granger property and park there as well. So those are options available to Lake Forest residents. Alderman?
Do you know, are they allowing bicyclists from Lake Forest to bike into the BMW?
That's a good question. I don't think so, but...
Chief, do you know that?
I believe that, yeah, they hook that biking ramp over there.
Chief, you're gonna...
Trying to make it quick.
Yeah, I believe that walkers can come in, and bicyclists also can come in via Everett Road. 60 obviously not a good idea, but yeah, anybody on a bike can come in. They're supposed to have bike wrecks in the main entrance area. Now, how many that'll allow, I'm not sure how many they're going to have, so...
Although, I think I did see or read that if you do come in via Everett Road and you're walking, you still need to go into the main entrance.
Yes, everybody is supposed to enter through the main entrance and not try and get in one of those subversive ways.
Because there'll be police officers there.
Or security.
That's right.
One or the other. Someone will be watching you. Next on the agenda, under the managers' reports, we have our community spotlight this evening on Lake Forest-Lake Bluff Historical Society. And to give you an update of what's going on and upcoming programs at the Historical Society, we have the executive director, Janice Hack. Thank you, Janice.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, for the opportunity to talk with you tonight and share with you news of our upcoming programs. I always enjoy coming to talk to the city council. Now, I always usually start out my talks sharing some sort of snippet about the city council. But actually, this year, I'm going to let you read something for yourself. Because earlier this year, we developed a mock newspaper for the year 1916 to promote our spring programs. And one of the things that we did to compile news for that year, we looked into our archives, and one of the things we looked at was the city council minutes from 1915 and 1916. And they were actually quite a fascinating read. And we have a summary in our mock newspaper of the council proceedings from that year. Now, the newspaper included a few items. First of all, they were reconsidering a referendum that had banned movies on Sundays. So I'm sure you can see that that referendum was actually revoked. And in kind of a recurring theme, they were reviewing an ordinance to prevent ducks and chickens from running at large in the city. And there were also continuing debate over the many street name changes that were happening in, that happened in 1915. Now, this mock newspaper was mailed to every household in Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, so if you don't remember receiving it, you can contact me, and I'm happy to send you another Now, one of our biggest events during the year is our local legends event, where we honor someone in the community who is a legend, has done something extraordinary. And this year is our fourth year for the local legend event. And so far, we've honored Captain Jim Lovell, the astronaut and commander of Apollo 13. We've also honored Adrian Smith, the architect of the Burj Khalifa, the tallest building in the world. And we've honored John Bryan, the cultural visionary, and really the man behind Millennium Park. And this year, I'm delighted to announce that we are honoring, as our 2013 local legend, Richard Marx. Now, does anyone know who Richard Marx is? Okay, I see a few head shaking. I mean, he is extraordinary in his field. He is a singer-songwriter and music producer. He lives in Lake Bluff, and he won a Grammy in 2004 for Song of the Year, which he co-wrote with Luther Vandross, and it was called Dance With My Father. And I think a lot of people hear that at weddings in particular. He's the only male artist to have a number-one song in each of four decades. And beyond his singing and writing, he's also really an extraordinary producer, and he's worked with many top musicians, including Keith Urban, Josh Groban, Natalie Cole, NSYNC, Barbra Streisand, and many others. And he's going to be interviewed by his good friend, Ro Khan, who is a radio personality on WLS AM radio. Now, this program is really unique, because it's a very intimate setting. It's not just a, you know, three-minute interview on The View or The Tonight Show. It's really a way to get in-depth and understand these legends, what drove them to do what they do, and what are some of their proudest accomplishments, and most importantly for us, why did they come to live in our community? And you really can't hear that information anywhere else. So this event takes place on November 2 at Lake Forest High School. Also coming up, as you mentioned, the golf tournament. And we are just delighted, the Historical Society, that we can offer a historical perspective about golf in the community. And Lake Forest really played a pivotal role in bringing golf to the Chicago area. And we had a wonderful exhibit a few years ago about the history of golf, and we're just thrilled that it's now on display at the West Lake Forest Train Station, so that visitors coming to the community can really understand how important Lake Forest was in bringing golf here. And I've also, we also compiled the exhibit panels into a booklet that we shared with both Conway Farms Golf Club and the WGA. And we've made copies of the booklet, and I've shared, I have some here tonight for all of you, the mayor and everyone on the council, and a copy for Bob as well, so he's going to pass those out later. And I encourage you to read it, because this really tells the history of golf here and why we are important. And it's just great that it's come full circle. You know, the WGA, there were many Lake Forest people involved in the founding of the WGA, and now it's come back, you know, and that history continues right up to today. Now, some of our other upcoming programs. We are just pleased to partner with the First Presbyterian Church for a community-wide lecture in connection with the new book that they have recently published on the history of the church. And the book is really more than just the history of the church, though, because the history of Lake Forest and the history of the First Presbyterian Church are so intertwined. And there was a lot of new research done for this book. The first six chapters cover all about the history of Lake Forest, and there's lots of pictures in the book that haven't been published before. So this is a community-wide event. It's free. I hope you'll come, listen to the lecture Reverend Chikoyan is going to talk, and then we'll have books for sale that can be signed as well. And we have a couple tours coming up. We are, by very popular demand, we are doing a repeat of our bike tour of the Lasker Estate. And if you want to understand the estate era, the Lasker Estate has it all, has a manor house designed by an important architect, had grand gardens, gentlemen farm, and of course, a private 18-hole golf course. So the bike tour will go around and view the 13 extant buildings, and talk about who Albert Lasker was, and, you know, why he built in Lake Forest, and, you know, the history of the estate. And then also, we're continuing a celebration of West Lake Forest in connection with the book that came out last year, and Susan Kelsey is going to do a tour of St. Patrick's Cemetery and St. Patrick's Church in October as well. And finally, we are doing a lecture about the history of Fort Sheridan, and it's going to take place in the old stockade at Fort Sheridan, which now houses the performing spaces for the Midwest young artists. And the speaker will be Nicole Stocker from the Lake County Museum. And that's going to take place sort of close to Veterans Day in November. So that's just a few things that are going on at the Historical Society, and all this information is on our website, as is the booklet on the history of golf as well. And I hope that you will come to join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janice, very much. Any questions for Janice?
I do. Your last slide actually answered my first question, is do you have your own freestanding website?
Yes. Actually, our website won an award last year from the Illinois Association of Museums, because it has a lot of archival information on it. It's up to date, it's very comprehensive, so, yes, we have a wonderful, wonderful website.
And my next question is, do you harvest email addresses, or does somebody, may somebody subscribe to your website? Because these events you have coming up look very interesting, and I wouldn't have known about them.
Yes, you can join our email list right on the website. And you don't have to be a member of the Historical Society to get our, you know, e-news, and we've got an e-newsletter periodically. But we hope you'll become a member as well. Thank you.
Janice?
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thanks, Bob, very much. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. The first item under this area is comments by Alderman Reisenberg, is chairman of the PPL Committee, discussion of approval of a license agreement with Lake Forest Bank and Trust for a drive-up facility ATM and premises located at 70 North Bank Lane. Alderman Reisenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. According to Section 5.1 in the city's policy for the inventory, sale, lease, and retention of public property, the city council must approve any leases longer than five years exceeding $10,000. On August 19, PPL met, and tonight is unanimously recommending that the city council approve a long-term lease agreement with Lake Forest Bank and Trust located at 70 North Bank Lane, and also known as Quarter Lot. Background, on January 1, 1993, the city entered into a 10-year lease agreement with two five-year extensions to lease the premises to Lake Forest Bank and Trust. The lease expires this year on December 31. In 2012, the bank and the city began negotiating the terms and conditions for the lease agreement. This evening, the PPL is seeking approval of a 10-year lease agreement with Lake Forest Bank and Trust in the amount of $64,129.47. That's for the first year. The license fee shall be increased annually on the anniversary date, on the, of the commencement date, for any increase in the CPI. For your convenience, a copy of a course was attached in the information that was, that was sent to us prior to the meeting. PPL is, is asking if appropriate, and should the city council desire, approve a license agreement with Lake Forest Bank and Trust for a drive-up ATM facility located at that North Bank Lane address. Just a couple, just maybe some of the highlights. As I said, 10-year license agreement with possible extensions for an additional 17 years. Rent is currently something in excess of $64,000 annually, and will increase annually with the CPI as it's adjusted. Intended use of the facility is for a drive-up bank and ATM facility. Bank is responsible for all utilities, and taxes are also paid by the bank.
Any questions for Alderman Reisenberg? Vic?
I would really note that the document is actually a lease, not a license. There's a little bit of inconsistency in the materials about that. And the reason is that it started as a license discussion. The bank actually wanted a lease, and so that is what we actually gave them. The primary reason for that is the exclusivity that they get with it. The benefit is that they will also be paying taxes, which a license is not taxable.
Yeah, I had a question, and it's just, again, being a little naive, but for this lease, and with the city, obviously, we're always looking for opportunities with the land that we have. The duration of time that we're signing on for this lease, is it, do we have an opportunity, if we do have development opportunities going forward, or an opportunity just to build maybe a garage for more parking in that area, to terminate the lease, if need be, for the benefit of the city? Could we do it through eminent domain, or...
We actually have a provision that if we provide notice within a specified period before the renewal date, we can terminate. It's not an automatic, unequivocal renewal, rather, it's a renewal that we have the right to provide notice in advance.
But not within the first 10 years, I think?
Correct. First 10 years are solid.
So I don't want to use the term handcuff, but to, we'd have to negotiate with them to make anything happen on that lot.
Theoretically, we could in fact condemn their leasehold interest if we chose, but the 10-year period is what was the basis of the negotiation, and if the council is not comfortable with that, then that's something that probably should go back for further review. But the 10-year period seemed to be consistent with their ongoing expectations and investments, and in turn, it seemed like we didn't have any immediate proposal for alternative uses of the site within that period.
Okay. If I can add, too, I believe that they asked for an option to purchase, correct?
They did ask for an option to purchase, and that was rejected by the PPL. It is not, it's not a part of the lease before you.
Okay. Question for people, I'm sorry.
Is this called a quarter lot, because it's not a full-size lot?
I don't know the history of that name, but maybe it had something to do with quarter horses sometime back. Actually, it's Quarta, and I think that was the original owner of the property.
Okay, that's funny. Okay, thank you.
A question for Chairman Reisenberg. On process, this property, was it ever, nobody, I don't have any feedback from anybody on this, this is a question. Was this available on the open market? Could anybody have approached us on this? How did it, how did, are we being preferential in any way, I guess, or...
Probably.
Probably? I mean...
I mean, they've had, they've been there, they've had it. Yeah, I mean, unless, unless the city manager, obviously, has been more involved in this before, before it came before PPL.
Nobody's been waiting to get it? We didn't slip this under, or...
No, we don't have a long waiting list, and actually, while we had put out feelers in the past, you might recall, we did an RFP for the drive-up facility at the east train station, and we didn't get any takers there. And so, and this came shortly thereafter. Because of the long relationship we've had with them, they're a good tenant, we like to keep on the space, and there wasn't anybody banging on our doors, if anything. There's a contraction, not an expansion.
So they didn't, they didn't win a battle, we just kind of re-upped things?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Could I hold on one moment and ask for any public comment or questions on this? If not, then I will entertain a motion.
And so moved for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda is to authorize the city manager to enter into a listing agreement with Canning &amp; Stray to sell Wedgwood lots number 22, 23, and 24. And I'm back at Alderman Reisenberg, is chairman of the PPL Committee.
Mayor, on August 19, the PPL committee met, and tonight is unanimously recommending that the city council approve a professional services contract with the real estate firm Canning &amp; Stray to assist the city selling Wedgwood lots number 23, number 22, number 23, and number 24. As background, at our May 20 meeting this year, city council approved a resolution declaring the lots surplus and directing staff to begin marketing the sale of the three lots. In June, staff sent correspondence to developers and realtors advising that these lots were for sale by owner. Since June, staff, staff has received a few inquiries, however, no proposals. The approved resolution also directed staff to solicit a request for qualifications from all local real estate agents who would assist the city to market and sell these three city-owned, underdeveloped lots. The city received RFQs from Canning &amp; Stray, Colwell Banker, Griffith, Grant &amp; Lackey, and Baird &amp; Warner. Of the four proposals received, Canning &amp; Stray prepared the most professional packet, including scope of work, acknowledging the 5% commission rate, and marketing recommendations. As staff is still negotiating a few items, we respectfully request that city council, request city council to authorize the city manager to enter into a listing agreement. For your convenience, obviously, again, a copy was attached as part of our background material sent to us several days ago. Just a few highlights. In 2012, you recall, the properties were zoned from QA to R4 by the plan commission. The, in May, recommendation made by the plan commission, in May 2013, based on the recommendation from the PPL, the city council declares these properties as surplus, authorizing staff to sell the lots, and a 50-foot covenant on the southern lots of 22 and 23, to act as a buffer to LTD commodities, the business. In July, again, the PPL affirmed mitigating the low-quality wetlands on the lots, which was completed by, which will be completed by, probably was not, I guess, by September 1. That's it, Mayor.
Any comments for Jack or questions? Any comments or questions on this topic from those in the ballot? I'd entertain a motion on this.
So moved.
Second?
Biddy, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Any other comments by council members this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Anyone here that would care to address the council on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number five, items for omnibus vote consideration, and I will read each of the five. If any of the council members would like to separate any of them, we can do so. Otherwise, I'll ask for a vote at the end to approve all five in its, in their entirety. Item number one, approval of the August 5, 2013 city council minutes. Item number two, approval of the check register from July 27 to August 23, 2013. two thousand and thirteen. Item number three, award of bid for the public safety fan coil replacement project. Item number four, payment authorization for painting the Route sixty Metro railroad bridge. And item number five, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. Anyone care to take any of those items out? Alderman Edelman?
I don't want to take any out. I just have a question on item five, just for clarification, and it pertains to fourteen eighteen North Green Bay. There's, in the third to the last paragraph, it says, "The board recommended approval," "The board noted that the property is isolated, located at the end of a long private lane, and is adjacent to preserved open space." My question is, I thought we always, we don't take into consideration whether you can see it or not see it. It had to meet the standard, so am I incorrect in my recollection? Is that a factor in these things, whether something's remoted, located out of the general public's view or not?
The criteria for a building scale variance specifically include one criteria that speaks to whether or not property is located adjacent to open space. In this case, in the case of this property, it is located immediately adjacent to open space, and the criteria do speak to whether there is an impact of the increased bulk on the public streetscape. So, that in turn relates to the fact that the property is isolated at the end of a long lane, and as a result, the additional bulk is not visible from the public streetscape.
All right, so I had it backwards, so that is a factor that's taken into consideration?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the omnibus items, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Now, just as an aside, I want to commend Michael Thomas for the effort and the great work he did in trying to get the bridge painted. I know the first go-around, the number was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars given to us by Metro, and I think we would all agree that not only is the timing important, but it just simply needed to be done. And you found a solution, and you found a way to get it done, and you and your team did a great job, so thank you for all that. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, ordinances, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, Series two thousand and thirteen. My guess is we will hear from Elizabeth Halleb, who's city finance director.
Good guess. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Submitted for your consideration this evening is granting a first reading approval of a bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bond Series two thousand and thirteen. This item was previously discussed with the council in July and August. It's related to a bond issue in two thousand and ten, the two thousand and ten A Series Bonds, which was just under ten million dollars, and funded the majority of the construction on the MS facility. And that has a single principal payment due in December of two thousand and fifteen, and it was originally contemplated that the old MS site, the Laurel Avenue property, would be redeveloped, and proceeds of that property would be used to pay the payment due in December two thousand and fifteen. Due to economic conditions, that redevelopment is not occurring as quickly as the city had contemplated, and the city is being very deliberative in ensuring that that very, very important redevelopment parcel is done in a very high-quality manner. Therefore, the issue of refunding was brought to the city council for consideration to take advantage of a currently still advantageous bond interest market, and allow additional flexibility by extending the structure of that debt service, and provide added flexibility, and not pose a burden on the city of that payment in December two thousand and fifteen, but instead allow more flexibility and time in redeveloping the Laurel Avenue property. So, the bond ordinance before you today has a lot of blanks. It has a lot of blanks because that auction will occur on September sixteenth, at which time, that evening, you'll hear the actual bid and interest rate proposed by the low bidder at the auction. Dan Forbes of Spirit Financial will also be here with me to present that information to the council, at which time you can make the final decision on the refunding issue. I'll be happy to entertain any additional questions.
Do we have any sense of what the current interest rates are on AAA bonds like this?
Yes, the projections that we presented in early August had a estimated rate of three-eight-five. We had seen a significant increase in interest rates over the ninety days previous to that, almost a full interest rate, but Dan feels that they're holding steady at this current time, and that estimate is still, although slightly conservative, still within the range of what we should see on the sixteenth of September, barring any unforeseen events occurring in the next two weeks.
And still advantageous to us.
Right.
And we can thank Detroit for the hundred and eight basis point increase.
Yes, and Cook County, and Chicago, and the state of Illinois.
Any other questions for Elizabeth on this? Any comments from the public on this item? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the first reading on the bond ordinance.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, under ordinances, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of Phase Two of the master plan for Woodlands Academy, the Sacred Heart, located at seven sixty East Wesley Road. If desired by the council, waive first reading and grant final approval, presented by Kathy Serniak, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Woodlands Academy has been before the council a number of times over the last eighteen months, and this is another in the series of steps in fully incorporating the former Barra campus into the Woodlands campus. Just as some quick background, in February of two thousand and twelve, the city council approved an ordinance that allowed the incorporation of the former Barra campus, which is in this area. You may recall there was a jagged property line that separated the two here. That special use permit ordinance allowed all of this site to be rejoined, and it currently is all of Woodlands campus today. Last October, the city council approved Phase One of the master plan. That first phase of the master plan approved the installation of a monopole to support wireless antennas, just at the very north edge here, just in the wooded area of the former Barra campus. That monopole is in place today. It is a hundred and ten feet, is visible from a few areas, much as the wireless task force and the Plan Commission expected. Over the next thirty to sixty days, the antenna array will be attached to that tower, and the antennas will be tested. Once that testing process is finished, the antennas currently located on the rooftop in the chimney of Old Main will be able to be decommissioned, and as previously approved by the city council, the demolition of Old Main will be able to get underway. That's expected to get underway before the end of this calendar year. What's before you tonight is Phase Two of the master plan for the United Campus of Woodlands Academy. This matter does come to you from the Plan Commission? And in summary, I'll quote the Plan Commission in saying that what they saw when this was presented to them was no surprises. They felt that the second phase was very much in line with everything that had been discussed for the Woodlands Academy. As discussed in the master plan that was approved and the special use permit, Phase Two of the plan demonstrates access improvements by reducing the number of curb cuts at the north end of the campus from two to one. The preservation of the front lawn is part of the Phase Two plan. The Cooney Library, built about fifteen years ago, is reused in the plan, retained and reused by both faculty and students for lectures and for other events. Athletic fields are developed, will be developed in the area that was formerly Barra campus once Old Main is taken down. There are improvements internally with internal circulation roads that provide better access throughout the campus, and provide parking on-site to support the athletic fields and the use of the Cooney Building. There is a memorial plan to Old Main itself, and there's an opportunity for use of what we refer to as the triangle parcel, a parcel of land owned by the city. And just to point out, a couple of those changes, and to orient you, these are the railroad tracks here. This is generally the location of Old Main today. The relocated access road will be in this area. You may recall that the current access to Woodlands Academy is closer to the ravine, closer to the curve, so by pulling that driveway off of the curve, there's improved sightlines, which is consistent with what's been discussed for many years. The preserved front lawn of Old Main, again, once you see this plan without Old Main, it is a bit disorienting, but the front lawn, the area where Shakespeare on the Green formerly was held, the area of the large trees, is preserved, and that's the streetscape along Sheridan Road. The athletic fields are proposed in this area, which is partially in the footprint of the old dormitories and science building. There are internal circulation roads that connect both parts of the campus, and parking is provided along those roads. The Cooney Building is preserved, and this indicates the area of a planned memorial, which could be, but may not be, the restoration of the cupola. And essentially, this location is right below where the cupola stands today. Once they get up there and see what condition the cupola is, that may or may not be feasible. It may not be restoration, it may be reconstruction, or it may end up being something else, but there is a memorial plan for generally in this area. The triangle parcel that I mentioned is located in this area. For years, Barra College used this old right-of-way for parking, and if you go there today, it's fenced off, but it is a crumbling parking area, and this triangle piece is simply an open area that the city maintains to some extent, and there are some large trees on that. As part of the previously approved Barra Woods Plan, this area was actually incorporated into that development because the city did not have any use for it. This plan, as directed by the city council in the original special use permit, is incorporated into the master plan for Woodlands Academy, but importantly, this plan works with or without that plan. There is some internal city staff discussion going on about this parcel, whether there is any city use that remains for that parcel. We expect to conclude that discussion very quickly. That recommendation from staff will be forwarded to the Property and Public Lands Committee, and certainly, Woodlands Academy needs an answer on that fairly soon, on whether the city would like this property to be incorporated. If it was incorporated, this open area would actually be part of a conservation easement that would be put on the front lawn, so it would remain as open area. The existing parking lot would be repaved, and the access to the bike path that currently comes right through here would need to be maintained if that property were to either be transferred to Woodlands ownership or to be used by them through some license agreement. So, that is a piece that will be worked out in the coming weeks. However, this master plan, as I said, works with or without that piece, but this master plan by including that is responsive to the special use permit.
Kathy, quick question. Where's the, when we were looking at this, there's a footpath, kind of with arching branches over that connects, that sort of connects South Park to Woodlands Academy, isn't there? Isn't there a woodland path back there? Maybe it goes to the woods that you've, that they donated?
This is the city wooded parcel, which was, many years ago, Woodlands Academy property. There are some pathways through there. That actually is an area.
Is it an informal path?
It's an informal path, and that's an area where we've had some discussions about working with open lands to restore that wetland in there and to really enhance that wooded area. But there are paths that go through there, nothing in an organized fashion.
Nothing fixing it or closing it is not part of the plan right now?
No, there's no, this master plan does not contemplate any changes to the wooded area. That would be a city decision. That really is part of South Park. And just to conclude, you do have an ordinance in your packet. You have a recommendation from the Plan Commission, a unanimous vote of six to zero in support of Phase Two of the master plan, and a number of conditions are recommended by the Planning Commission. One, assuring that the change to the driveway access occur prior to use of the athletic fields for safety reasons, to ensure that, as part of that change to the access, that we work closely with our police department and engineering staff, to assure that crosswalks on Sheridan Road are relocated as appropriate, that the steep slope setbacks from the ravines are respected. In this master plan, all of the planned improvements are outside of those steep slope setbacks, that a lighting plan, exterior lighting would ultimately come to staff for review and permitting, as would any other improvements, and that if that city triangle parcel is transferred, that there is a requirement that Woodlands maintain that bicycle connection from Sheridan Road to the bike path that exists today. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? I know we have represented some Woodlands here as well. Any questions for them? Any comments or questions from the public? If not, I'd ask for a motion to waive first reading.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, and now I'd ask for a motion to grant final approval.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call vote again, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven-zero, motion again, carries.
Thank you very much, congratulations. Next item on the agenda, consideration of an ordinance cementing the City of Lake Forest Liquor Code, Section four dash ten. Under number of licenses, the proposal would waive the first reading and, if desired by the city council, grant the final approval, presented by Victor Filippini, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The ordinance before you tonight is a relatively simple one. It's to change two of the authorizations of license categories we have in our liquor code. One would be to accommodate a request of the Ragdoll Foundation, and that would be for an F-five license. The other one would be to accommodate the Shell Station at Deer Path and Oakwood, and that is a matter that the council did have some discussion at the last meeting. I would note that that would be an A-two license. Now, consistent with the mayor's direction, we have included, for informational purposes, the conditions that would be contemplated for the license of the Shell Station. That's not really a matter for the council to act upon, but as Mayor Schoenheider noted, he wanted to make sure that the council was familiar with what his intentions were if that license were granted, and that's why the conditions are there. The action before you tonight is to consider the ordinance. If you think it's appropriate, you can waive first reading and then consider it for final approval, otherwise you can simply have a first reading at this time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
You know, if I may, thank you, Vic. I'd like to make a couple of comments. My role as liquor commissioner, I know we've had discussions about this item over several meetings, and it's an item that I took very seriously and have spent a great amount of time looking at and reviewing. I spent some time with Kathy, and certainly spent some time with Kathy and Chief Held, both in discussions as well as an onsite visit. I think, as Vic mentioned, there are some very defined conditions under which I've agreed to let this go forward. I think we're going to closely monitor this. The business owner has committed to several things, including a very limited area, restricted The business owner has committed to several things, including a very limited area, restricted area of sales, obviously only beer and wine, additional security, additional staffing, 24-hour cameras monitored by the police department. In addition, as a part of this, he is going to undertake a fairly substantial renovation of the facility, internal, as well as some items external, which I think, as much as we love the Shell Station, we might all agree, is perhaps overdue. It's ready to go. So given that, and given that I believe, you know, he is a taxpayer in town, he certainly competes with other outlets in the immediate vicinity who also sell wine and beer, to me, it was an issue of fairness, and his willingness to really work closely with the city and with the police department, I think, gave me a comfort level that I was prepared to go forward.
Mayor, may I make a statement?
Yes.
I probably should have said this before, but because I am on the Board of Directors of an organization that has a liquor license, I must recuse myself from either, from both the discussion and the vote.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I noticed condition two was that the coolers, the total frontage of coolers is restricted to 90 inches. The only thought that occurred to me is that could be like three 30-inch coolers, but I'm thinking they're more typically 36 inches. And I'm not certain. I was going to run over to Sunset Foods and take a look, but was there... There was some underlying analysis into how you came up with a 90? Because if they are 36 inches, two of them would be 72, and the third one would be over the 90. So my only suggestion is to make it 108, in the event that they're 36 wide per freestanding unit. Otherwise, leave it at 30.
Yeah, and I think, Mike, we looked at that, and that was the defined amount that he asked for and the defined amount that the coolers had. The other comment I also wanted to make, and we'll continue on with the discussion, is one of the comments Alderman Waldeck made a couple of weeks ago was the idea of driving into the Shell Station and seeing the flashing lights of cold beer and lottery tickets. And one of the other things that Bill has agreed to do is remove all advertising signage from the front of the facility with the exception of signs for hours. And I think that's a big compromise for him, and I think it reflects his willingness to work closely with the city on this matter.
Well, at the end of the day, it's your decision as liquor commissioner, and we are just deciding whether to grant some more liquor licenses.
Mm-hmm.
Fine. If there's no further discussion...
Any other comments?
Can I make a motion to waive first reading?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Biddy.
Alderman Novit.
Excuse me?
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
No.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg has abstaining. Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
So that's five, one.
It passes.
It passes.
Motion for final approval. Can I move that?
Second on that, please.
I'll move for final approval.
I had a motion. Alderman Palmer, can I get a second on that? Got a motion from Alderman Moore.
Well, I'm seconding him, man.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Biddy.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
No.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg has abstained. Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Five, one, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, new business. Any new business to become... I'm sorry, Vic.
This is actually old business. I wanted to correct something. Earlier tonight, Alderman Novit had asked, in connection with the Lake Forest Bank and Trust lease, whether the city had a right to terminate on the renewal. And actually, in an earlier draft, it did. In the final draft, it does not. I apologize for confusing that. If the council members are concerned about that, the appropriate mechanism would be a motion to reconsider that earlier vote. If the members of the council are still comfortable with the outcome of that vote, no further action is taken. But I wanted to make sure that I clarified that misstatement. I do apologize for that.
Thank you, Vic. Anyone care to make a motion of that effect?
To a degree. I mean, again, 10 years is a long time. I'd like some mechanism, if an opportunity came up for the city, that a future council might have an opportunity to void the lease. It's something to consider.
Yeah, the terms of the lease, as they are stated, is for that tenure with the automatic renewal. The city's only ability to terminate is if there is a default by the... Again, earlier draft had a right, but the final draft that was before you was only with a default. The city does have the right to condemn the leasehold interest, as I mentioned, but a motion to reconsider would be appropriate if that's your request.
I'd just like a motion to reconsider so the council would have the opportunity to consider, vote on it, and proceed.
Do you have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote for that?
That would be appropriate.
So this will lead to more discussion tonight or postponed to another meeting?
No, it would allow you to then vote on the actual issue again if this motion passes. It would bring the issue back on the table for tonight.
We can talk about it somewhere.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
No.
Alderman Reisenberg.
No.
Alderman Palmer.
Nay.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Four, three, motion carries.
It's back on the table.
Alderman Novit, would you care to expand or have further discussion?
The discussion's pretty easy. Again, as said before, we have a tenure span that we have to live by the lease. It's kind of wards of the land for the city. Again, we should be entertaining opportunities for development, as we are in Laurel and all the other parcels in the city. If we handcuff ourselves for a 10-year span with no opportunity to escape and an opportunity comes up, I guess we can't do something because we have a small area of a larger contiguous lot area that, again, we're going to have difficulties with developing if an opportunity comes up. Obviously, at this point in time, it's questionable, and the next three, four years of an opportunity could come up, but if the city wanted to do something as simple as developing a municipal garage to increase parking, because now we've developed another area in the downtown's business district, we couldn't do that. And it's just, again, keeping opportunities for the public available. Just a thought. Again, I just want to make sure the council considers it, determines it, votes on it, so later on, we're not kicking ourselves, simply put. So, Vic, when's the soonest we could get our hands on that? 10 years?
Assuming that the tenant doesn't terminate, it would be 25 years under this lease that was negotiated between the city and the bank.
Only the tenant can stop the automatic renewals?
I'm sorry?
Only the tenant can stop the automatic renewals?
Correct. We have the ability to terminate on...
Default.
Default, but not as of right.
It's a 25-year lease.
In effect. They have the ability to terminate at either the 10, 15, 20, or 25.
We can't stop it after 10.
That is correct, as it was negotiated between the city and the bank.
So when this was negotiated, what was the value of a 10-year lease to them? Or was it even discussed? Or was it not something they had any interest in? Because we know what the value of the 25-year lease is.
Well, I think their interest clearly was they wanted to just put it out as far as they could, because it has become such a critical component of their infrastructure, if you will. I think from our standpoint, at least initially, if we felt that it was generating the necessary revenue, we've been looking or we've been talking about trying to lock in all of our leases for as long a period of time as we possibly can. I can't say that they would oppose it, and if the council this evening wanted to go back to the language that was in the original one, that said basically 10 years, and then either party at the end of 10 years can terminate or renew, that, you know, we could certainly take that back to them and see. I doubt that they would walk away from the site, but we can certainly offer that back up to them, and then if there's a further counter offer, that we could bring that back to the full council.
Bob, is... I'm sorry. Bob, is there... Given the size of the property, is there any practicality to this conversation?
Well, as I mentioned earlier to, I think it was Alderman Moore's question, there isn't a lot of interest in the site outside of Lake Forest Bank and Trust. It's almost a single user for that location. It's an important location for them, no question about it. I think from their standpoint, if I was in their shoes, I'd want to make sure that I've got that locked up as long as I possibly can, so I know that the city couldn't take that away from me, and then I have to make alternative arrangements. Because keep in mind that this is their only drive-up facility on the east side of Lake Forest. So, you know, I don't know if I've answered your question. I think if the council's uncomfortable, and I think to Alderman Novit's point, years ago, and I'm losing track of those years, I want to say eight years or so, we did have some preliminary conversations in the city about, do we have a parking demand? Do we want to look at the court lot as being a deck parking? Because you might be familiar with the change in grade and elevation on that site, that the Oakwood side is about eight feet, I think, or 10 feet higher than the Bank Lane side. So you could almost do a deck parking similar to what we've done down in Illinois, where the upper level would enter in off of Oakwood and the lower level would enter off of Bank Lane. That discussion didn't go very far, to be very honest. I think we identified it, but at least right now, there isn't a tremendous demand to add parking to our central business district. But it is a location, not unlike the location behind City Hall here that we have. So, again, it really... We don't have anything on the horizon that we're thinking of, so it's a real question is, is 25 years too long, or do we want to at least allow ourselves an opportunity to have another conversation after 10 years? Did they construct the original leasehold improvements? They did. Okay, so they've gotten investment there, that they've had 20 years to amortize it over, maybe fully amortize it over. But if we gave them, locked in 10 with an option on three fives, three successive fives, certainly over 30 years, they could amortize more reasonably that the leasehold improvements.
But they did their current building without this extended lease.
Right.
So they're...
I mean, if they didn't cover their capital... What concerns me is if, all of a sudden, we do foresee a need for it...
Or a better opportunity to sell it or at a higher price or lease it at a different value.
Well, I'm thinking bigger picture. We own a lot of land from Deer Path north to Wisconsin, and there's some global thinking on what to do with that long term. But if we had to take that leasehold interest by eminent domain, it's going to cost us a lot more if they got 25 years locked in than if they had 10 years locked in. If the council's interested, it is back on the table. If you would want to table this this evening, we could reach out to Lake Forest Bank and Trust representatives tomorrow. We could take Alderman Edelman's suggestion of 10 years with three fives and see how they react.
For either party.
For either party.
And I suspect they're going to be there 25 years.
With the respect to the work done, I think Alderman Novit hit it on the head. 25 years is just too... It's a good project, but it's too long.
I would like, as chairman of PPL, I'm ambivalent. I mean, you're not going to hurt PPL's feelings if you think that that's a... They have additional conversation. I hope I didn't step on any of your lines, Bob, but, I mean, I'm all right with it, I guess.
Right. The only other thing I would add is if the council is comfortable with that arrangement, if you want to approve your motion subject to those terms, we could take it back to them and say that it's approved if you accept this. If you don't accept this, then it has to come back to the city council with, you know, different consideration and terms.
And presumably, I think from the discussion, those terms would be mutual opportunity to terminate at each of the renewal terms.
Without a discount, I think it's still a reasonable rate.
I think we'd want to have some kind of notice provision in there.
There is. We would just make that mutual instead of just on behalf of the town.
Is there a motion for that?
Yeah, I'd motion we revise the lease to a firm 10 years with three five-year options to renew, or either side can terminate.
I think we have to move to suggest that, right?
It would... I think the motion is to approve subject to a mutual termination right with each renewal.
And realistically, and I'm just putting this forth, 10 years from now, the odds that drive-through banking exists with all the online banking is questionable also. In volume, the bank will even be interested in it, but having a mutual opportunity is probably a good thing. And not that I want to change your vote at all, but I think, Alderman Novit, you're... The idea here was that we could lock them in as well. I mean, we thought Northern Trust was going to be at the train station forever, too. And now, as you see, the number of drive-through lanes is actually getting smaller and smaller. Look at Bank of America on Wisconsin now. I think some of them, they just use as parking. They don't even have them open for drive-through. So we might be outsmarting ourselves here long term. You never know.
Well, they could... But they could get out of it already, so we're not... What we... We're not changing that element of it.
Right, they'd be locked into 10 years.
There is a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Biddy.
Can it be discussion?
It can be, if you'd care to have further discussion.
Yeah, you just scared me.
Yeah.
I mean, I went from ambivalent to... Well, I don't mean to scare you. I was a little whipped last year with my neck. What?
Well, I don't mean to scare you, because Alderman Moore is absolutely correct. Under the current terms, they could terminate after 10 years.
Right.
If the scenario that Alderman Novit referred to, that drive-up banking goes out, they could... They would have to pay through 10 years, and then they could terminate. We could not. So that would exist under this scenario, and so I don't think that that fear is as great. It's just out there. It might happen, but at least not for 10 years.
Could you... Could somebody state the motion again? Because I...
The motion is to approve the lease subject to mutual termination upon each renewal term. Right now, it's only the tenant having the right to terminate on each renewal term.
But we changed those as well, from a seven and an eight to three fives, right? Or two five, three fives?
It's a 10 with three fives, and each of the renewal terms, either the city or the tenant would have the right to terminate under the motion.
And what's reasonable notice to require?
The agreement provides for 180 days.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Biddy, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Any additional items for council discussion this evening?
Does anybody else, like, slide under the dais here?
No.
Is it time to repulser these chairs with a fabric that kind of grips your butt?
We could wear Velcro pants.
Alderman Edelman, that will be on new business for next time.
Alderman Edelman, you'll be happy to know that actually, staff is starting to look at new chairs up there, because I've expressed some concerns that those are so big that someday, either you or Alderman Waldeck is going to go off the end of the dais. And so we're... We are investigating them that are a little narrower, and we'll look at making sure that there are no slid seats. Yeah, because I keep, like, going like this.
Well, we wouldn't miss Mike, but we certainly would, Kathy. I resemble that.
I'd like to move to put some sandpaper on that.
If hearing no other important new business, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. See everyone at BMW.